Everyone, we're going to call the regular council meeting to order for Monday, March 25th. And I will ask everyone to rise if you are able for the singing of "Oh, Canada." [Singing] Oh, Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all of us common.
Car ton bras et porter les pays, il s'est porté la croix. Ton histoire est une épopée des plus brillants exploits.
God keep our land glorious and free. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Okay, so I'll hand things over to our CAO Troy McCulloch for the roll call of councillors.
Thank you, Madam Warden. District one Deputy Warden Sean Sampson.
Present.
Thank you. District two councillor Michael Dignan.
Present.
Thank you. District three councillor Melanie Sampson.
Present.
Thank you. District four Warden Amanda Bomberk.
Present.
Thank you. And finally, District five councillor Brent Sampson.
Present.
Thank you. The roll's been called. Madam Chair.
Thank you, Troy. So, next item is if there are any items to add to the agenda. Do anybody, do any councillors have items to add this evening? Okay, hearing done. We'll ask for a motion to approve the agenda, please.
I'll make that motion.
Thanks councillor Dignan. Seconder.
I'll second.
Thank you councillor Sampson. Any further discussion on the agenda? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed, that motion is carried. Okay, the next item is the review of the minutes. They have been provided in advance and there are two sets of minutes this evening. The first are the minutes from the public hearing of February 25th, 2024. If there's no error or omissions, could I please have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you Deputy Warden. Seconder.
Second it.
Thank you councillor Sampson. Any further discussion on the minutes of the public hearing? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed, that motion is carried. The next item is the, are the regular council meeting minutes from February 26th, 2024. And if there's no error or omissions on those, I'll also ask for a motion to approve, please.
I'll make that motion to approve.
Thank you councillor Brent Sampson. Could I have a seconder?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you councillor Dignan. Any further discussion on the minutes from the meeting of February 26th? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed, all right, that motion is carried. Okay, so that brings us to the next item, which is question period. This question period is restricted to the items on the committee reports. And this evening, I think we just have the one committee report from committee of the whole. So if there are questions, there's no members of the public in the gallery this evening, but folks on the phone can call 902-226-9885. That's 902-226-9885 for questions related to the committee of the whole report. And we'll leave that open for a maximum of 10 minutes. Should we get a phone call, I'll, I will also kind of accommodate for the slight delay between our conversation here and what folks see on the screen at home. Okay, hearing no questions and no phones ringing, I think will move us along. So that, the next item then is the committee reports. And I will hand things over to you Deputy Warden for the committee of the whole report.
Thank you, Madam Warden. Committee of the whole report for March 2024. The committee met on March 11th, 2024. The committee discussed the Richmond County Literacy Network funding request for the type four regional health general grant and the amount of $1,000. I move that council accept the recommendation from the committee of the whole to approve the Richmond County Literacy Network funding request for the type four regional health general grant in the amount of $1,000 and it be allocated as follows. District four funds $500 and District five funds $500.
Motion's been made by the deputy warden. Could I have a seconder, please?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you councillor Brent Sampson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed, motion is carried.
The committee discussed the Almeda and Garen Club funding request for the type one infrastructure grant funds in the amount of $4,500. I move that council accept the recommendation from the committee of the whole to approve the Almeda and Garen Club fund, funding request for the type one infrastructure grant fund in the amount of $4,500 and it be allocated as follows. District one fund $1,500, District two fund $1,500, and the regional fund $1,500.
Thank you Deputy Warden. Could I have a seconder?
I'll second that.
Thank you councillor Dignan. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed, that motion is carried.
The committee discussed the Almeda and New Rise and Senior Club funding request for the type one infrastructure grant fund in the amount of $5,000. I move that council accept the recommendation from the committee of the whole to approve the Almeda and Senior Club funding request for the type one infrastructure fund in the amount of $5,000 and it be allocated as follows. District one fund $1,750, District two fund $1,750, and the regional fund $1,500. And further move that there, if there is a shortfall, the remaining funds are to be allocated from the regional fund.
Thanks Deputy Warden. Could I have a seconder, please?
I'll second that.
Thank you councillor Dignan. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed, that motion is carried.
The committee discussed the request for tax reduction due to a fire from Michelin Landry. I move that council accept the recommendation from the committee of the whole to write off the taxes for property AAN 003320456 owned by Michelin Landry, which was completely destroyed by fire in the amount of $762.72, which represents the taxes on the dwelling from April 27th of 2023 to March 31st of 2024.
Thank you Deputy Warden. Could I have a seconder on that?
I'll second that.
Thank you councillor Sampson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed, all right, that motion is carried.
The committee discussed the revised appointments of the Eastern District Planning Commission staff. I move that council accept the recommendation from the committee of the whole to approve the following Eastern District Planning Commission revised appointments effective April 1st, 2024. Building inspectors, Harry Martel, Andre Sampson, and Sean Donovan. Alternates, David McKenzie, Jonathan Martin, and Luke Ross. Development officer, Andrew Jones. Alternates, John Bain, Wanda Rhine, Kristen Nudzkoff, and Michaela Tate. Assistant development officers, Harry Martel and Andre Sampson. Fire inspectors, Harry Martel and Andre Sampson. Alternates, Sean Donovan, David McKenzie, Jonathan Martin, and Luke Ross. Dangerous or unsightly premises administrators, Sean Donovan and John Bain. Alternates, Harry Martel, Luke Ross, and Andre Sampson. And special constables for building, fire codes, dangerous or unsightly premises, and land use bylaws, Sean Donovan and Jonathan Martin.
Okay, thank you Deputy Warden. Could I have a seconder on those appointments, please?
I'll second those.
Thank you councillor Melanie Sampson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed, that motion is carried. Back to you.
The committee discussed the Purple Day proclamation request. I move that council accept the recommendation from the committee of the whole to proclaim March 26th, 2024 as Purple Day to help raise awareness and show support for all those living with epilepsy.
Could I have a seconder on that motion, please?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you councillor Brent Sampson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed, the motion is carried.
The committee discussed Operation Veterans Build. I move that council accept the recommendation from the committee of the whole to refer the Operation Veterans Build to staff to explore the opportunity to support the program.
Could I have a seconder on that, please?
I'll second that.
Thank you councillor Dignan. All those in favor, aye. Those opposed, that motion is carried.
This concludes the committee of the whole report for the month of March 2024, and I move its adoption.
Thank you Deputy Warden. Could I have a seconder on the adoption?
I'll second that.
Thank you councillor Brent Sampson. Any further discussion on the committee of the whole report? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed, all right, that motion is carried. Okay, thank you very much Deputy Warden. It was a busy committee of the whole, so really appreciate the report back. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the second reading. So we are looking for a motion to give second reading approval to the Central Richmond Secondary Plan and Land Use Bylaw to allow former institutional buildings to be converted into dwelling units. So if I could have a motion for second reading approval?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you councillor Melanie Sampson. Could I have a seconder on that, please?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you councillor Brent Sampson. Is there any further discussion on the second reading approval? All right, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed, that motion is carried. Okay, the next item on the agenda is new business. And is, this item is regarding the sale of municipal property, an undersized lot adjacent to property owner PID 75112144. We had, I think, staff check into this with folks. This is a piece of property that is adjacent to Richmond Villa. And the chair and the, and the CEO of the villa indicated that they would not have a use sort. So nothing really impeding our, our sale in that regard. But thank you very much for checking in on that. I think it was, yeah, a very good idea. So at this point, if there are no objections, or even to move to discussion, I'd look for a motion to declare property PID 75122144 as surplus and further move that staff proceed with the sale of the undersized lot to the adjacent property owner, R and L Rentals, at the appraised fair market value plus HST and migration costs. Could I have a motion to that effect?
Madam, before we, Warden, before we make the motion, I just think the PID number you have written down is, maybe I have it written down is wrong. I have 75112144.
75112144, is that not what I said?
You double toed.
I double toed, I apologize.
No, it's all good.
The PID is 75112144. Yeah, okay. Okay. So if I could have a motion to that effect?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you councillor Brent Sampson. Could I have a seconder, please?
I'll second it.
Thank you councillor Melanie Sampson. Is there any further discussion on this item? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed, that motion is carried. So thanks folks. All right, we're cruising right along through our agenda this evening. But I know the second, the next items regarding updates from me are, are related to housing, both of them. The first is an update from the Straight Richmond Housing Matters Coalition. And I did provide the meeting, the meeting notes from our last meeting, which happened on, I think Wednesday of last week. Just a couple of key pieces of information from the, the housing coalition is that, number one, our two housing support workers that work in this region between Richmond County and Port Hoxbury, they're, they've been working on a contract with Cape Breton Housing, Cape Breton Community Housing Authority, which is a nonprofit based in, in Sydney area. They, that contract is being transferred to the local YMCA, which works out of Port Hoxbury. So I think that's really great that there'll be some kind of more local management for those, those workers to be able to depend on. Which means they are, you know, they'll, they'll be, I think, better able to kind of respond when they need that, that kind of senior guidance. I did want to mention also that they've been doing a really fantastic job. They have signed a lease, I think, as of Wednesday, for the 14th family that they've been working with just since January. So just in a couple of months. And so it looks really promising. But it is, it does continue to be a challenge finding, you know, finding appropriate housing for folks. The regional, sorry, the Nova Scotia Nonprofit Housing Association, I did also want to mention, we had an update from them. So from the coalition, Cheryl McDaniel sits on the, the provincial nonprofit housing association on our behalf. She does a great job representing us. And they are looking at potentially putting on a community information session. And I've also pitched that, you know, if we're able to get a joint meeting scheduled with Port Hoxbury, I've requested that the town consider having this association come in to do a presentation to both councils as well, because it would really kind of kill two birds with one stone. We could learn more about how they can support us. So stay tuned on that. I think another couple of items that I wanted to mention specifically was that we are looking at doing another service-based count. I cannot believe, I think it's been something like three years since our last service-based count, and I know that that provides us with some really excellent local data in terms of people who are both, either homeless or who are precariously housed right now. So, looks like they will be conducting that count during the month of May. And, and, you know, it'll cover again all of the eastern zone. So we'll hopefully have more and more service providers participate in that, and we'll get some really great data as a result. So, I think that was, I guess, some of the highlights I wanted to mention, but there are other items in the, in the report, in the minutes. If anybody has any questions, please feel free to shoot them my way. Okay, and just maybe for members of the public watching at home, the Straight Richmond Housing Matters Coalition is really, it's a, really just a network, an information sharing, an advocacy network. So, not, not a, not a formalized not-for-profit organization, but certainly a valuable one. And I know we were all during our election campaigns, well engaged with them as they made housing a priority during the municipal elections last time. I would anticipate they'll be doing the same this time, so. Okay, if there's no questions, then I just want to move us on to the, just a general housing update. And this is related to the meeting that we were able to attend last week with members from Department of Municipal Affairs and Housing. I think they were pretty much all from that, that department. So obviously more on the housing side than the municipal affairs side. And I think Shelley has a, a little slide, that kind of slideshow. It's just something I put together following the meeting that captures some of the key components that they were talking about, but then really looks at, you know, the last slide's really about action planning. How do we tackle this in our communities? So I'll get you to advance the slide, Shelley. So some of the key points, obviously, you know, what we heard from the folks at Municipal Affairs and Housing, according to our housing needs assessment, and, you know, is that we've had a slight population increase, we've had a slight increase in households, 4% increase from 2016 to 2021. Our vacancy rate had been mainly steady, but had, you know, went from 7% to 6.2% in 2021. Again, this data, now here we are in 2024, I anticipate, you know, we would, we would be accurate in saying it's, it's becoming more and more of a crunch. So, so we know which way things are trending. Our permits were trending in 2022 lower than historical levels, but they picked up dramatically is what we heard from the, the Eastern District Planning Commission for 2023, and it projected to do the same this year as well, once the March numbers are in. If you could advance the slide? Thank you. So, kind of, you know, I guess in terms of measuring folks in Richmond who are in core housing need, you know, the statistics here speak for themselves. This again is based on census data, so nothing kind of more common or, or more up to date, sorry, than what we have as data for 2021. But we did see, you know, some, some dramatic shifts, you know, from, from owners and renters of minus 44% and minus 32%. So these are folks who do not have alternatives. They're faced with unaffordability, suitability, and inadequacy, so housing in bad conditions, et cetera. So it's, it's a dire situation for our county, just like many other regions of the province. If I could get you to advance the slide. So the bottom line with the housing needs assessment is that there is an existing shortfall that they are projecting we have now of 370 units. They're projecting by 2027, that shortfall will grow to 515 units. Historically, an average of 50 units are built each year within our county. But if, at that rate, that build rate would leave us with a shortfall of still 265 units by 2027, based on their projections. So we would need an additional 55 units to close that gap per year. So it's, it's a, it's a monumental task, what they're, what they've outlined would need to be done in order to eliminate the shortfall completely. Thank you Shelley. So, they did discuss in the presentation about the provincial five-year housing targets, specifically helping to create over 41,000 new homes in Nova Scotia, supporting over 17,000 more affordable units, and improving housing conditions for more than 47,000 households. But, you know, I guess my, my question back to council, my question to them was, you know, what could this mean for Richmond County? And, you know, maybe we should be looking at setting our own regional goals, so that we know what, you know, how close we are to what success would look like in Richmond County, you know, at the end of 2027. And I think, you know, that's an exercise we could undertake ourselves, or through a potential partnership with the town of Port Hoxbury, through the Straight Richmond Housing Coalition, the Straight Area Chamber of Commerce, et cetera. So, on that note, just to the next slide, the action plan that I think we, you know, you know, was ruminating on, on all the stats after the, after the meeting, I think we do need to, you know, take some more aggressive action planning at a very local level here, and really centered around capacity building. We've had developers approach us, you know, for, for various projects. How do we capitalize on that? How do we respond to affordable housing programs? How do we support affordability in our communities? How do we develop and refine the tools that the province is providing us with, but also what can we do to add to them? Things like land inventories, that type of thing, which I know we've discussed in the past. Are there, you know, ways that we can provide capital programs or access to capital programs? And I know we're developing policy in that regard now, so, you know, we're moving in the right direction. And how do we navigate solutions? So, some of the actions around, for something like capacity building, really, I think, does need to start with the establishment of the nonprofit housing association that the Straight Area Chamber has been taking a lead on. But I think also some work that we could be doing in the background, analyzing and comparing data, which is something that we, I've had on our action items list for, for a little while now. On the supporting affordability, this is maybe, you know, getting our housing support workers in, working a little bit more closely with them. How do we, you know, support the more distribution of rent supplements in this region? When it comes to developing and refining tools, some examples would be, like I said, the available lands, what kind of policies can we put in place? I was discussing with Troy earlier today, maybe there's an opportunity for us to create a digital kind of repository of housing information on our website, similar to how we have seniors information on our website, and, you know, areas of our website that are dedicated for special initiatives, where we feel that there's a pressing need. So we could start to collect data there to help people who want to develop, who want to develop, you know, potential projects, to really kind of give us a central repository where we're collecting that information. And in terms of providing, you know, capital programs, you know, of course, it's about infrastructure investment, and I think there's a role, obviously, for us there, there's a role for the provincial government and potentially the federal government in that regard as well. And then action planning around navigating solutions, it's developer engagement, it's the work that we do now as councillors, as you as a CAO Troy, working with developers. But very specifically, what we've pitched back, I think, informally during that meeting, and I will plan to follow up with DMah on as well, is, is creating a housing navigation service, a housing navigator. So similar to how we have, you know, across the province, you'll find municipalities investing in a senior safety coordinator and leveraging provincial funding to do, you know, to, to make that position sustainable year after year, active living coordinator, et cetera. There are many examples where the provincial government puts that kind of program in place. And given that, I would say housing is probably the second, if not the top issue facing this province right now, it's something that I think we should continue to, to pitch to them as a, as an opportunity for us to invest with them to create a navigation service that would, that would help us be prepared for investment, because I think that is, that is a big challenge. And I, I know that some of our developers have certainly felt that as well, so. So that's, I guess, you know, an idea of how we could be action planning forward. Just at this point, not really looking for any action from council or a motion of any kind, but I did want to, I had to kind of put my thoughts together in a way that started to represent what are the, what are the pieces of action we're already taking? What do we, where are the gaps that we need to fill? So, if, you know, folks have ideas about that, I'd love to hear from you on it. And, you know, maybe within the next few, few months, we could look at moving the needle on, on some of these items, so. Any questions or comments? I know I just took up a lot of airtime with that, I'm sorry, but if, yeah, sorry Deputy Warden, did you have?
No, no, Madam Warden, I appreciate the, the presentation and the information. I think it's very important. I totally agree. When you look at those numbers, those are very concerning numbers. And I, I think, for me, when, when we look at, you know, the, the course of government, how it works, I mean, some people will say that, you know, we're the last line of defense when it comes to the federal government, provincial government, municipal government. But my, my take on that situation could also work that we're, we're also the first line of offense. And it's, for me, I think it's time we get offensive here and, and turn, turn the offense up and, and really get this moving. And as you mentioned, the work on our bylaw and policy when it comes to capital development, I think that's a step in the right direction. But, yeah, I think that, yeah, we, we got to get moving and we got to help out some potential developers, developers here and, and move this needle forward for sure. Thank you.
Thanks Deputy Warden. And, and, I mean, you know, to be, to be clear, to be clear and to be fair, we have been taking action, the best that we can, but right, we're like many rural municipalities, we're financially constrained and have significant infrastructure deficits. So putting, putting these ideas together in this way, hopefully will help us kind of build the partnership across the, across the matrix of, okay, it's not just us, it's, you know, what the province can do, what the local chamber can do, what a nonprofit could do, et cetera, et cetera. So it's really about spreading the workload and creating some impact from that collective action, right? So, okay. Any other comments, questions? All right, so we'll move us on to the next item on the agenda, which is correspondence. And we have a couple of pieces that require action. The first is a memo from Director of Public Works Chris Boudreau regarding the Richmond Arena refrigerant purchase. Some startling numbers as always when it comes to discussing the Richmond Arena. And I do recall, of course, that we did have, you know, a major leak of the R22 refrigerant. And apparent, I did not realize how difficult it was to get, and it sounds like there is an opportunity for us to obtain some at an advantageous price compared to the market price. So, market price would be about $100 per pound. And the price that is available to us right now from another facility is $45 per pound. So it's a pretty significant savings. That being said, the facility, the opportunity to purchase is 780 pounds of the R22 refrigerant is available to us. At $45 a pound would be a cost of $35,100 excluding HST. So I believe the idea is that we've got, you know, a recommendation from council at the, or from, sorry, from staff at this stage, to approve the purchase now of the refrigerant, but conduct the purchase after April 1st, so that it would fall within next year's fiscal year, so it could be included in the budget for next year. So it wouldn't be a departure from this year's budget. But because we don't have a budget approved yet for next year, we do, we would need to make a motion to make that special purchase. Yeah, so any comments or questions? Yeah, so any comments or questions on that?
I'd be willing to make that motion going forward.
Okay, so staff has recommended the, that the motion be to purchase the available refrigerate, refrigerant, and further move to proceed with the purchase on or after April 1st. I just want to make that, that okay to note in your motion. Okay, in advance of budget approval. Okay, thank you, Councilor Brent Sampson. Could I have a second or?
Yeah, I'll second the motion.
Thank you, thank you, Deputy Warden. Any further discussion on that item? Yeah?
So while I do understand the idea that it wouldn't affect our current year's budget, like, in the past, we found ourselves with surpluses in our year, and I'm just wondering, and again, I know that we are not really aware where we're sitting with that, but I'm just wondering if maybe the CAO has an idea of where it looked like we were trending in the current fiscal, because it actually might be better off for us to make an adjustment to current year budget, therefore leaving next year's budget freer for the pieces that are coming forward.
Madam Chair, through you, we were trending in the positive with the surplus and probably could absorb it in the current, if that was council's wish. Keeping in mind that we did have overages at that facility already due to the repair, that was quite costly, because it affected both units. But I, I do believe, as things were trending at the last look, we could absorb that in this year, if, if need be.
If there are no other comments regarding the motion, I would propose an amendment to the motion to include it in the 2023-24 budget.
That's okay, I was just waiting for the Council Sampson to finish. I, I guess one of the questions that I would like, and I don't know if, if Chris may have that available or not, I, I noticed down in his notes that if the R22 did not become available, we may have to look at an R453A refrigerant, which is the newer style, not the newest, but still newer than what we have there. I just wondered if we could get a price on, because again, if we get a complete fail safe and then we can't get no more of the R22, we've spent $30,000 or $40,000 into the last amount of refrigerant we can get. I'm wondering if we can get a price on the cost of replacing the, I know it's not going to be anywhere close, however, I think we're gonna, we have to look at, you know, if we're going to be replacing the building, or if we're going to try and do the upgrades and, and repairs to that building, we might be further off looking at investing a little more for a full refrigeration unit that uses the current refrigerant then.
Yeah, I can understand where you're coming from. The only thing I would think I would say to that is I'm assuming, based on the shortage of this in general, not that I'm any kind of expert on this stuff, if we were to have a situation like what you're describing, it would probably be possible for them to sell this back off to another municipality or another arena, you know what I mean? So that way, I think you could recover a lot of your costs, and as it gets, you know, maybe all of your costs, depending if it's, if it's hard to, to get in that fashion.
No, sorry, Madam Warden. The, yeah, and, and maybe so, I just, I don't think there's anybody else using the R22. I think we're one of the last kick at the cats. It's 1969, I believe, was the, or '79 build, and pretty much every arena has been refurbished since then, so.
Yeah, and it's, it's a great point you're making, Councilor Diggan. I think the, the issue, though, is that, you know, even if we decide to kind of move to a newer type of refrigerant, it's going to take time for that equipment to get installed, for that, you know, all of that to happen. What happens if we have a major leak again between now and then, right? So I think it's a timing thing for us, we, you know, we could be potentially without ice for a long period of time, right? Well, we, we only have a week left, but we're looking at September, like, the reality, the idea, I guess the reality is, is that even trying to get a contractor in to do a whole replacement of the system, you know, that's not going to happen overnight, it's going to take months and months, and so I think, I think that's why the recommendation is coming from staff, would I be fair to say? Yeah.
It's the favorable market price at this point for something that is getting harder and harder to come by, and trying to limp along the building as best we can, right?
Thank you, Troy. Good, good points, though, certainly, Councilor Diggan, and so I think Councilor Melanie Sampson has made a friendly amendment, proposed a friendly amendment to the motion that we proceed with the purchase of the available refrigerate, refrigerant, but further move to proceed with the purchase during this fiscal year. Is that the gist? Okay. All right, so Councilor Brent Sampson, you had made the original motion, are you okay with that amendment?
No, I wouldn't, I'd rather stick with staff's recommendation, so, yeah.
All right, so then I think what we'll have to do process-wise is we'll have to go through and vote on that motion, and if it, if it passes, that, that'll be the, the plan forward. If not, then we can open for a, a different type of motion if, if council chooses. Is there any further discussion before I take the vote on this? So just to be clear, it's to support the purchase of the refrigerant and to proceed with the purchase on or after April 1st, in advance of budget approval. That's the current motion on the books.
That has been moved and seconded.
Moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Motion is carried. Thank you, folks. Okay, next item on the agenda is correspondence from Natalie Stevens, the Chapter Coordinator for Autism Nova Scotia Straight Area Chapter regarding the Autism Acceptance Month Flag Raising Request. So Natalie has reached out and is seeking to have a flag raising again in April, and has provided a proclamation draft, which has been included in your meeting package, to declare April World Autism Acceptance Month. So if folks are in favor of the proclamation as written, I'll look for a motion to approve, and then following the motion, I will read the proclamation, so.
I'll move to approve that.
Thank you, Councilor Brent Sampson. Could I have a second or please?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Councilor Diggan. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed? That motion is carried. So we'll just take a minute and read out the proclamation very briefly. So the proclamation is World Autism Acceptance Month for April 2024. Whereas it is estimated that one in 66 people across the country are autistic or have autism, and one in 32 people, approximately 30,000 individuals in Nova Scotia are autistic, have autism, and whereas many dedicated autistic individuals and people with autism, parents, teachers, researchers, and professionals, including those at Autism Nova Scotia and other community-based organizations, work tirelessly throughout our province to make the communities where we live accessible and inclusive for autistics and individuals with autism and their loved ones. And whereas with 11 locations throughout the province and with the support of the autism community, Autism Nova Scotia builds understanding, acceptance, and inclusion for autistics and individuals on the autism spectrum and their families through leadership, advocacy, education, training, and programming across the lifespan. And whereas this month of April marks Autism Acceptance Month, and Sunday, April 2nd, marked World Autism Acceptance Day, when people across the globe came together as a community to celebrate autism and promote acceptance and inclusion. Therefore, be it resolved that I, Warden Amanda Mumberkett, on behalf of Richmond Municipal Council, do hereby proclaim April 2024 as Autism Acceptance Month throughout the County of Richmond, and encourage all of our citizens to recognize the autistic individuals and people with autism, family members, caregivers, educators, and other professionals who strive to make Nova Scotia an inclusive and accessible place for us all to call home. So slight correction on the date, it would be Tuesday, April 2nd, but I just caught that as I was reading it out, and didn't, couldn't get ahead of it, so. So thank you to Natalie Stevens and Autism Nova Scotia Straight Area Chapter for providing that proclamation, and we will definitely be scheduling a flag raising. April 2nd might be a little bit of a short turnaround, but we'll see what we can do, you know, with, with coordinating with staff, so. Oh, and do we need an additional motion for the flag raising? Okay, perfect. Okay.
It's not in the list.
It's not in the list, yeah. So could I have a motion then to, sorry, could I have a motion to have staff organize the Autism Acceptance Month Flag Raising and Proclamation Ceremony for a date in April, and further move that staff advertise an invitation to residents in local media?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Councilor Melanie Sampson. Can I have a second or please?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Councilor Brent Sampson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed? That motion is carried. Okay, so the next item on the agenda is correspondence for information purposes, and we did receive, sorry, a letter back from Minister Kim Masland from Department of Public Works regarding the Port Royal Bridge. This was a response to the letter that we sent to her following discussion with Lakin Delory and the folks who are involved with that initiative. You know, Minister Masland has indicated that there will be some upgrades planned, or there are upgrades planned now for McCacken Road, but that the Port Royal Bridge is not currently in their, in their plans to, to replace, so. Does anybody have any questions on that item? I'm thinking if I, if we haven't already, I may just send that to Lakin, so she, she's aware, and so that she's, she can see from her, she and her team can see the response that we received back. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the review of action items. Are there any questions on the action items list? Okay, and there were no items added to the agenda, so we'll open for question period. And again, the phone number to call into question period is 902-226-9885. That's 902-226-9885. And this question period is generally restricted to the remainder of the agenda following the committee reports, and we'll just give that a minute in case there are phone calls coming in. Okay, I'm not hearing the phone ringing, so we'll close question period for this evening, and there being no further business on our agenda, we will adjourn the meeting at 7:42. So thank you very much, everyone, and thanks to those watching online.